Calling the meeting to order for 6:00 PM. Special counsel meeting. Counselor member Berman.
Here.
Counselor member Burt.
Here.
Counselor member Holman.
Here.
Counselor member Klein.
Here.
Counselor member Ness.
Here.
Counselor member Price.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Counselor member Schmidt.
Here.
Eight present. And counsel will be going into a closed session regarding labor negotiations with SEIU Local 521 hourly. FM 91, The Bay Area's Jazz Station. And that was Dori Kayemi, a couple of tracks from "Kicking Cans." And this is Quest, Warner Brothers. Dori Kayemi, really a beautiful album. And he talks about sort of the concept of the album being, I guess, all about comfort and a vision for the future. And he's begun with the song "Migration," which I started the show with, and speaks of peace and hope for the entire human race, and not just for the privileged few. So here, here, "Migration." Keyboards, Don Grusson. Bass, Abraham LaBoreal. Drums, Claudio Sloan. And percussion, Paulino DaCosta. Lots of great background vocals. Ivan Lees, Kevin LaTao, just to name a few. And the soloist featured on that was Branford Marsalis. The next track was called "Forever Lover and Friend." And the pianist on this one was Billy Childs. And really, really a fun, little more upbeat tune. The album again is called "Kicking Cans" by Dori Kayemi. And his last name is spelled C-A-Y-M-M-I. Beginning the jazz oasis, something from Richard Galliano's album, Lorita. That's on the Dreyfus Jazz Label. This is a tune that he composed titled "Giselle." You're listening to jazz and improvisational music here on 91.1 in 90.7 in Sonoma. Thanks in a large part to all the members of KCSM. Members fund 80% of Jazz 91's operational costs. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who became a member and renewed their membership. And we're hoping that we'll continue that as we go along into the fall. So don't feel that it's all completely over. You can still become a member. Coming up next is Sarah Vaughan. This is a ballads collection of the kind that I like, that have the purple cover and the roulette recordings. And this is Sarah Vaughan with Key Largo on FM 91, The Bay Area's Jazz Station. ...
FM 91, the Bay Area's Jazz Station. Jessica Williams, and that was "I Cover the Waterfront", from an album titled Gratitude. It's on the Candid recording label, issued about 1996. And it's just solo piano, from Jessica Williams. Beautiful tune. Art Pepper in front of that, "Close to You Alone", "Close to You Alone", from One September Afternoon. This is a Galaxy release, and working with Art Pepper, Stanley Cowell, the piano, Cecil McBee, Carl Burnett, bass and drums. 1980 is when they recorded this at Fantasy Studios in Berkeley, and it's found on the Galaxy label. Red Garland started the set, "Trouble in Mind", from Red in Bluesville. This is a Prestige release, with Red Garland in a trio setting with Sam Jones, Art Taylor. 1959, "Trouble in Mind", from Red in Bluesville. Thanks so much for all of your help, and becoming a member, and rejoining. And, you know, for those of you that have stepped on up, we just really appreciate all of your help. If you have not had a chance yet, and would like to, in a relaxed setting, just go to the website, kcsm.org, and you can still become a member now. Be great. Be really great to have you, because we fell a little short. So we want to make sure that we stay on top of it, so you don't have to do anything else during the holiday season. "Hey Merry Christmas!", you know, "Happy Hanukkah", think of us. Um, actually, that's not a bad idea. I'm just kidding. Coming up next is... I had to turn around and look at it. A piece from Claire Fisher. And I actually went into the Turntable LP section of our library, and I really enjoy it, but I do forget how much they stick together. You have to really have calluses on your hands to pick out records. I'm such a wuss. Sorry. It's a beautiful tune, and let's get started. The next set on FM 91, the Bay Area's Jazz Station.
kcsm.org, live on the World Wide Web. It even works at home.
FM 91, the Bay Area's jazz station, Claire Fisher. And this was a tune that was composed by Claire Fisher called "Sometimes I Feel This Way." This is with Claire Fisher solo on this track. Some tracks have Chuck Domenico on bass and Colin Bailey, the drums. From the album The Reclamation Act of 1972 on Revelation Records.
So returning from closed session, there's no reportable action? If we could start? Welcome, Mr. Rosen. I understand that you're here for a little presentation?
Yes. Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Many of you are familiar to me. It's a real treat for me to be up in Palo Alto and talk for a few minutes about the work that the District Attorney's Office does and how we interact with your fine city. So I thought I would just speak for a moment about first what the mission of our District Attorney's Office is. Our mission is to aggressively pursue justice in a way that's fair and treats everyone equally and with respect. The core values of our organization are service, hard work, transparency, and integrity. And these values underlie all of the policies, procedures, and prosecutions that we undertake. So a little bit about the structure of the DA's office. We're the largest prosecutor's office north of Los Angeles. We have 540 employees, 180 prosecutors, 80 investigators, 210 support staff, and 70 criminalists. We run a state-of-the-art, internationally accredited crime laboratory. And we really do the things that you see on CSI. So the only, we have, we do DNA work, computer forensics, toxicology, we analyze firearms and trace evidence. Literally, all the kinds of things that you would see on TV are things that we do. There's two caveats. Usually, it takes us longer than 45 minutes to solve the crime. And while I think all of our criminalists are probably very attractive people, people that have pulchritude, as Councilmember Niss would remind me of that vocabulary word, most of our criminals, when they go to crime scenes, don't wear tight or low-cut clothing. They're usually in scrubs when they go out there. But we offer tours of the crime laboratory for community groups that are interested. And please contact me, and we're happy to arrange a tour if you or other folks in your city are interested in that. We prosecute approximately 40,000 criminal cases a year. Most of those cases are misdemeanor cases. So it looks sort of like a pyramid. The base of the pyramid, most of those cases are misdemeanor cases. And as you move up the sides of the pyramid, the cases become more serious, but there are fewer of them. In our county, last year, there were 56 murders, which was significantly more than we'd seen in our county the previous three to four years. The crime rate in our county and across the state sort of has looked like this from the 1990s until today. It's gone down, but the last year or two, it's ticked up a little bit. Primarily, the reason that it's ticked up is we don't have as many police officers as we once did. And in the next two to three years, as cities in the county begin to add police officers, I expect the crime rate to go back down to where it was. So speaking of police departments, you're very lucky here. And you're going to hear it from me, because I don't know how often you hear it from folks that come and speak to you in the council chambers. You have an outstanding police department. And that really starts at the top with your chief, Dennis Burns, who is smart, hardworking, fair, even-tempered, and innovative. And it happens that this year, he's the president of the County Police Chiefs Association. And I see him at least once a month at these meetings, where we all work together, all of the agencies in our county, to try to provide safety and justice for everyone that lives here. Some of the very notable cases that your police department has worked on, I'd like to illustrate for you. About a year ago, a little more than a year ago, someone in Palo Alto had their iPhone stolen. Now, I serve all of Santa Clara County, so I can tell you that if your iPhone is stolen in San Jose, nobody cares. Someone's iPhone was stolen in Palo Alto, and the police started to look for it. And this iPhone had the "Find My iPhone" feature on it. And the police found the iPhone in San Jose, in a large apartment complex with 200 to 300 units. And they found it in this one particular apartment. They also found some other stolen Apple devices, some iPads and some other iPhones. And I'm not sponsored by Apple. Those are the products that were found. If there were Samsung products, I would have said that also, but they actually were a number of Apple products. Along with 750 pounds of methamphetamine. This was the largest seizure of methamphetamine in United States history. And it all happened because someone's iPhone was stolen in Palo Alto, and the Palo Alto Police followed up on it. And what was very helpful about not only finding the 750 pounds of methamphetamine, it was also helpful that it was packaged in one- and two-pound bags. And a number of these packages were names and addresses. So that was extremely helpful to us. When I told my father about this case, 750 pounds of methamphetamine is worth about $35 million. And I told my dad about this. And my dad said, "So let me make sure I understand this. So they have $35 million worth of methamphetamine, but they can't afford an iPhone?" That's how these folks worked. After this case with the iPhone, where we found this methamphetamine, the DA's office and the Palo Alto Police Department actually teamed up. And I worked with Lieutenant Zach Perron at the Palo Alto Police Department. And we did a public service announcement about how to prevent yourself from being a victim of smartphone theft or laptop theft, what to do to try to protect yourself from having that happen. And in addition, what to do if your device was actually stolen, and how you should handle this. It happens that this issue of smartphones being stolen has really, has led to quite a number of robberies in our county and other major cities in America. And so, an issue that San Francisco DA George Gascon and myself and the Attorney General in New York have worked on, is to get the makers of these devices to put a kill switch on them, so that once the device is stolen, it can't be used by someone else. And we're optimistic about how that's progressing. Another, just a couple more examples of things we've done with the Palo Alto Police Department. There was a burglar, a serial burglar, that burglarized several homes in many counties, four different counties. Our county, San Mateo County, San Francisco, and Alameda County. And nobody was really able to stop this guy until he made the mistake of committing a burglary in Palo Alto and a burglarizing, a house that Steve Jobs used to live in. And working with the Palo Alto Police Department, we have a task force in our office called the React Task Force. And working together, we were able to find this guy and recover a lot of this stolen property. Finally, we've worked with the Palo Alto Police Department on a gun buyback that was done approximately six months ago, that my chief assistant, Jay Boyarsky, attended. And many, many guns were recovered. And the thing about taking these guns off the street is that there's a, unfortunately, when there's different disputes or domestic disputes between individuals, or when children get hands-on guns, bad things can happen. And so, we're very pleased with the results of this particular gun buyback, and we're very happy for the assistance of the Palo Alto Police Department. So that's a little bit about the prosecution work we've done. Just a few things about different prevention programs we have in the DA's office, and how we're happy to work with your city and with nonprofits in your city on these kinds of programs. We have a parent project, which is a program that parents go to to learn to be better parents. This is specifically for parents of teenagers, whose teenagers are maybe starting along the wrong path, are starting to use drugs, are associating with gang members. And folks, parents get referred to this program through courts, through the school. We offer it in English, in Spanish, and in Vietnamese. We have a law-related education program, where we take elementary school kids in third and fourth grade, and we bring them to court and take them on a tour of our crime lab and of the police department. We have a misdemeanor pretrial diversion program for folks that it's their first offense. And let's say it's a petty theft offense, something very minor, and they otherwise don't have a criminal record. We try to divert them from the criminal system, have them pay restitution and pay the victim what was stolen, but do it in a way that doesn't leave something on their record. And finally, we have something called the Case Program, Communities Against Senior Exploitation. We have two prosecutors that are assigned to elder fraud and financial abuse. One of those prosecutors specifically does community outreach to churches and to synagogues and to senior centers and community centers and to caregivers to help people understand how to not be a victim of financial abuse. Seniors are particularly vulnerable, one because as a segment of society, they tend to have more assets than others do. They often own a home. And of course, as people get a little bit older, sometimes they're not quite as sharp as they once were. So we want to try to help seniors protect themselves from being victimized. And then, unfortunately, if they are, we aggressively prosecute those cases as well. But we're happy to partner with anyone in your community to do that. We also, in terms of real estate fraud and mortgage and financial fraud, we do a lot of partnering with real estate groups and other community groups, again, to explain how to prevent yourself, how to keep yourself from being victimized. And if any of you have bought or sold a home recently, you'll get a letter from me, explain, a letter from me that explains all the different ways that, all the different scams out there that you may start to be receiving information about, because a deed was recorded and a property was transferred, and the things that you should look out to, so that, so nothing bad happens to you. So that's the presentation I have. My really hope for the DA's office is that we create a culture of excellence to reflect the excellence of this county and cities like Palo Alto and this county. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
So we'll return to council for any questions.
Okay.
Well, I think they feel comfortable they know it all.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions that you think of later, or ways that we think we can help your city or help citizens in your city, please don't hesitate to call me. We're at your service.
And thank you so much for coming and doing this presentation.
Pleasure. Have a good day.
We do have two speakers to this item. We have, I guess I haven't seen this before, 170.6.
Are you familiar with that challenge, Jeff? You should be. In actuality, in the year 2003, I was accused of committing some of the most despicable crimes, Jeff, by your organization. Horrible crimes: spousal, rape, and child molest. Very difficult for me to swallow. These were allegations that were simply untrue. In fact, the police officers that were involved in this, April Chan Wagner, falsified numerous reports. She indicated that I was raping these two individuals while I was at work. We don't live in an era where I can be transported from my office to my home, which is almost 30 miles away, to rape these individuals. Not only did she say that, Jeff, but she indicated that I had transferred to the two of them an STD. That is a sexually transmitted disease. I'm healthy, healthy as an ox. And oh, by the way, I don't know, Jeff, if you know the meaning of exculpatory evidence, but I can tell you this, Jeff. Since that time, I have been an ardent student of criminal law, and I will challenge you, sir, in any criminal law, anytime. You see, I'm still on the hook, Jeff. I'm still on the hook, because there is no statute of limitation for these crimes, and I think you know this. Police Chief Robert Beckham, or, yeah, he told me that, "Oh, you don't have anything to worry about, Mark. You know, the statute of limitations is going to run out." Jeff, my challenge to you is to write a letter to the Nicaraguan government extraditing these two individuals, bring them back, and face the charges. You know why? Because they embezzled $35,000 out of my account, sir. And Daniel Ryan said that that was community property. And oh, guess what? He had stalled a phone in my apartment, and he claimed it was exigent circumstances. Sir, there is a hierarchy to putting into effect exigent circumstances, and you know that, sir. Shame on you and this policing agency for keeping on the, keeping me on the hook for this hideous crime all these years, and you just sit there and you just indicate how proud you are of this police department. Well, give me something, sir, to be proud about. Do you understand me? Do something about that. Take me off the hook.
Thank you.
Relieve me of my misery. Do you understand me, sir? Nod. Acknowledge me.
My name is Lois Salo. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I'm a member of Stop the Ban and Women International League for Peace and Freedom, 98-year-old peace group. Mr. Rosen, where do you stand on this immoral, unconstitutional ban? Are you going to work to enforce it? And I do happen to note that you will be running for reelection fairly soon. Can you give me an answer, please? Thank you.
Tony Chompy.
Now I understand why your office didn't do anything about all the falsified evidence that this police department submitted to you as an inherent conflict of interest. Aggressively pursue justice for everyone? I don't think so, Jeff. And you tout your crime lab? Well, crime lab analyst Christopher Capora verified that four seconds of audio/video footage had been removed from Tamar's Taser video, and yet you concluded that no tampering occurred. Can you explain that? Crime lab analyst John Bork verified that the Taser video frames are not in chronological order. Can you explain that? Palo Alto Police Officer Kelly Berger verified at the scene of the incident that four Taser probes were fired from two separate Taser guns. How come there's no video footage of the second Taser gun firing, Jeff, on any of the videos? Where'd that video footage go, Jeff? There are identifiable scenes that have been removed from Tamar's Mav video and dialogue removed from Tamar's Mav video, but you still conclude that no tampering has occurred. There's verifiable evidence that Officer Berger committed perjury during the pretrial hearing, yet you refuse to prosecute him. That's a crime against the people of California, not just me. Why do you refuse to prosecute Officer Berger for committing perjury? Pursue justice for everyone. Pursue justice for everyone? Just not me. Why is that, Jeff? How come you refuse to pursue justice for me? Okay.
And now we move on to city manager comments. Lalo, are there any city manager comments?
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, members of the council, Lalo Perez, Chief Financial Officer. I have five announcements tonight. The first one's, once again, the Palo Alto Airport Association will host the annual Airport Day event at the Palo Alto Airport, which is located adjacent to the Baylands Parks at the end of Embarcadero Road. This open house offers the community a chance to see the inner workings of the airport and better understand and appreciate its value. The best part of it is that it's all free. City staff from the fire, police, and public works will be on hand to demonstrate equipment and answers. Not, not the airplanes, though. We will show other equipment. The event will be held on Sunday, September 29th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. But, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. About 3,000 athletes ran and walked by the light of the harvest moon Friday night at the 29th Annual Palo Alto Weekly Moon Run and Walk in, at the Baylands last Friday. Saw some of you there. It was presented by the City of Palo Alto and the Palo Alto Weekly. The 5K Walk, the 5K Run, and the K Run all started at the Baylands Athletic Center and wound its way through the Baylands. It's a fun community event that brought out people of all ages for the friendly competition of the runs and leisurely enjoyment of the nighttime walk in the Baylands. The event proceeds benefit the Palo Alto Weekly Holiday Fund. The Children's Theater was named the best place for live entertainment in 2013 in an annual readers poll by the Palo Alto Weekly. The 2013-2014 Playhouse Production Season, a series of magical fairy tales events for three-to-six-year-olds and their parents, opened with Rapunzel, September 14th and 15th. The Children's Theater launched an online ticketing for its production, which has been very successful to date. In addition to a full schedule of theater, dance, and musical classes, which are now on their way, our main stage production of The Jungle Book has begun rehearsals with a cast of 37 children. The Great Glass Pumpkin Patch returns to the Palo Alto Art Center, September 29th, 24th through the 29th. This is an annual fall tradition that represents the largest glass pumpkin patch in California. While at the art center, be sure to check out the exhibition of Bibliophilia, which features the selection of works by artists united by their love of books and libraries and again, no admission, free admission. The owl-shaped bollards have been installed at the Mitchell Park and Community Centers by artist Brad Oldham. He created the owl-shaped bollards for the front of the, of the building in two poses, wise and whimsy. Each bollard is estimated to weigh between 700 and 800 pounds to prevent vehicles from entering the pedestrian area. The stainless steel surface is meant to reflect the environment around them and this is the first of four major artworks going into the Mitchell Park and Library Community Center. There's pictures on the screen of them and there's also some at your places. And those are the announcements I have tonight.
Thank you. And now we'll move to oral communications. Herb Barak.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. Just briefly before making my comments about the Brown Act, I would just say that when both the city manager and assistant city manager are absent, the council should appoint an acting city manager. The city manager can't do that under the charter and it can't be a person who holds a job that the city manager, who reports to the city manager. The comments I have before you on oral communications relating to the Brown Act refer to tomorrow's noticed meeting of the council-appointed Officers Committee that has a closed session as the single item of a conference with labor negotiators. This agenda description has the same deficiencies that a previous agenda description had when another committee had planned a closed session to discuss with its real estate negotiators regarding coverly. The first deficiency is that it just uses the generic name council members as agency negotiators when the Brown Act requires the actual names of the individuals. That's a minor deficiency since it can be cured at the meeting by naming the people. The second deficiency is that the agency negotiators are a combination of council members. In this case, the entire CAO Committee plus another individual, Sherri Lund. By definition, either, that is, either the, either the committee itself or a, a single council member plus someone who's not a council member is a legislative body within the meaning of the Brown Act, which means when they negotiate, they have to do it in public. They can certainly receive their instructions under a closed session, but if they're a legislative committee, which they are under the definition of the Brown Act, they would have to hold the negotiating sessions in public. Now, in the case of the coverly negotiations, that closed session was never held. However, when it came before the council, the agenda was properly done and the only negotiators listed were staff. So, did not have a problem of having a negotiation that had to be held in public. So, I think it's a mistake to have this closed session and since it's less than 24 hours from the meeting, you can't have a changed agenda for it. However, if you want to have such negotiations in public, in this case, it would be with the city attorney and city clerk, there is a precedent. Former city attorney Ariel Pierre Cologne left the city to take a job with Boulder, Colorado, and his negotiations for terms and conditions of employment were done in public before the Boulder City Council. So, if the city attorney wants to have her negotiations in, in public, she can certainly do it because it's been had before, but it's kind of ironic that the closed session you be having with your negotiators is regarding the city attorney and you're creating something that would violate the Brown Act in some respect. And besides, you should do what the coverly thing did, which is, it is not the committee that should be meeting in closed session with the negotiators, it should be the entire city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, city council members. I'd like to add a little gloss to your esteemed colleague, Mr. Schmidt's remark about the prudence or lack of prudence of letting go of city properties, property the city owns at this time. I'd like to add that the City of Palo Alto, you own a part of every single lot in town inasmuch as you have the power to dictate what use it shall be put to, which is the principal determinant of value. And I, I see as you, as you give away upzoning or sell upzoning, the value of all the land in town rises. And I would like to make you aware, if you're not already aware, of the possibility that you might have to buy it all back. Everybody in this room and everybody in this town is going to grow older and they are going to want to stay in beautiful Palo Alto, at least 90% of them are. And you are running, or we are running out of the fortunate people, such as ourselves or some of us, who bought houses or built houses in the 1960s. These people are coming online and they, these people have, will sell their houses and there'll be enough capital gains, lots and million, lots and lots of money, so that will be enough for them to live to the end of their lives. But the people coming along afterwards won't have that much capital gain. More and more of them will be in the position of wondering how they're going to manage to have housing. The Adult Protective Service will not let them stay. Well, anyway, you might find yourself paying $8 million an acre for every single, every single cohort of seniors in town. Little something I want to read to you from the General Services Administration about giving or selling, selling away government property. Homeless, homeless assistant providers, eligible nonprofit organizations, and state and local governments are generally given priority before surplus property is made available to sale, for sale, to the general public. And the properties are suitable, if the properties are suitable for the homeless, that is the very first use to which our federal government thinks its surplus property should be put. Thank you.
Thank you. Palo Alto Free Press. Moving on to the consent calendar. Do we don't have any speakers on the consent calendar? Item five.
One speaker.
So, Herb Barak. This speaks to item number five.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. Council members, I have a newsletter at your places dated today on, on the subject in which I request that you remove this item from the consent calendar. The, the item ostensibly is just an appointment or, it's a, to, a recommendation from a committee to appoint an acting city auditor, but in fact, the only evidence of the committee's action indicates that it thought it had the right to make an appointment, it didn't make a recommendation. And also that it thought it had the authority to go out and, and direct staff to recruit a search firm for the permanent position of city auditor. In fact, that's the council's prerogative and I provided you with the historic information from only two years ago when Councilmember Holman was chair of the council-appointed Officers Committee, where the, the committee interviewed the various recruitment firms for the position of city auditor and made a recommendation to council. And then the council decided who would be the search firm. And in addition, the, the committee discussed recruitment criteria for the city auditor position. And I believe that that item is connected to the appointment of an acting city auditor , which it depends upon what kind of a search you're doing, how long it's going to be and how long you're going to be needing someone else in the position. And as I've indicated, there wasn't even a motion in the form of a recommendation before the CAO Committee. These actions, which have happened repeatedly this year on certain committees with certain persons' membership or chair, have been in violation of the council's own procedures, which you just recently adopted in February of this year, that say committees are advisory to the council. It doesn't matter which members of the council are on the committee or which members of the council chair the committee, you cannot violate those rules. They apply to everybody. And for those reasons, I think it's appropriate to remove this item from the consent calendar, that if you want a recommendation, then that's the kind of motion that you come from the committee and you go right back to it. In regard to the recruitment firm that's mentioned in the staff report, I went online to see if in fact, they are currently noticing this particular position and it's not there yet, but if you scroll down on the site, you will find that one of their recent appointments is Palo Alto City Auditor. Now, I don't know if they're talking two years ago of being a recent appointment or they're talking about the one that we think hasn't been made yet. But if you go by the fact that they're not yet noticing the current opening, nothing's going to harm be done by delaying it by following the proper procedure. Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll start moving.
That's seconded by Councilmember Niss, made by Councilmember Shepherd. If we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. Now for item number seven. Do we have any speakers? We don't. Item number seven. I thought I saw one.
Yeah.
Ha ha.
He's a former mayor. Oh, not Gil, his wife.
Gil Woolley, to be followed by Gail Woolley.
Good evening, Mayor, council people, city staff and citizens. I am Gil Woolley. I live at 1685 Mariposa Avenue. I used to live next to 1693 Mariposa Avenue, but now I live next to Mystery Project. Most frequently, when I'm out in the yard working on a car or a boat or helping my wife with gardening, people stop and ask me if I know what is happening next door. My answer has become, nothing is happening next door. The building permits expired years ago, work in the house stopped years ago, the owner's son who started the project has lost interest and moved away, and the owner seems unwilling to spend the time to plot a course of action and to finish the project. When I back out of my driveway, the construction fence around the Mystery Project hides my view of anyone walking up the sidewalk from that direction. I have to back up ever so slowly and still live in fear that some small child or animal will blunder into the path of my slow-moving vehicle. I've been backing up very cautiously for over five years. Enterprising realtors and private persons will sometimes ring our doorbell and ask if the Mystery Project is for sale. Do I know who the owner is and how to contact him? After five years of this, you can imagine that this is getting pretty old, well past its used-by date. I support the recommendation by Vice Mayor Shepherd and the council members Berman, Holman, and Price to ask staff to draft an ordinance regarding building code installed construction projects. Thank you for listening and I hope for acting.
Former Mayor Gil Woolley.
I also live next door to the Mystery Project, another, the stalled construction, as it says in the staff report. On October 13th, 2006, the Cyclone Fence went up and that was not, just a couple weeks short now of seven years ago. The following January, on the 30th of January, the demolition of the house that was existing occurred. And during that year, the basement, which was a, a deep habitable basement, was, was constructed and the, the top of the basement, in other words, the first floor, was, was installed. So, the, in the picture that is going around, that much was done during the first year of construction in 2007. In 2008, the house still looks pretty much just like that picture. The house was pretty, not, not much was done on the house. They decided to work on the garage a little bit and there was enough done so that there was an inspection every six months, which is required by the ordinance. Finally, in 2008, the very last inspection was in, excuse me, 2009, the last inspection was in June and so in December, six months later, the building permit expired. So, that was four years ago and absolutely nothing has happened in the last four years. This is two, two, two major problems with this, which I think probably are generic enough to be problems with any stalled construction project, other than of course, it's an, it is a unsightly, rather unattractive place and it detracts from what is otherwise really a lovely neighborhood. One is that it's an attractive nuisance and two is that it's potentially unsafe. It's an attractive nuisance in this particular case because we have had one instance of drugs, drug dealing occurring on the property and we had another instance where stolen property was stored on the property. The person who stole the property was on a bicycle and they had to wait for somebody to come with a car and so they, they stored it there for some time, had a beer while they were waiting. The second reason is that it's unsafe. In the picture that's coming around, you can see the window well, which is nine feet deep. There is no way out of that if you should fall into it. So, it is an unsafe situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Vlasic. Linda Vlasic.
I'm Linda Vlasic, and I'm also on Mariposa. And I would like to strongly urge you to direct staff to draw up an ordinance to deal with stalled construction projects such as this as quickly as possible. I would also like to recommend that you consider requiring an architectural review, not only for two stories, but for one story such as this, so there are guidelines to help them fit into the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we turn to council on the colleagues' memo, and Councilmember Price will kick us off.
Thank you very much. Thank you to members of the public who have spoken to this item as well. The colleague memo addresses the issue of the consequences of stalled construction in our residential neighborhoods specifically. And over the course of the last, oh, I say six or eight months and longer, there have been properties identified that continue to be points of visual blight and providing lots of issues and problems for our communities. And they very specifically illustrate the problems that can emerge. There are a variety of reasons why these properties remain unfinished. But as sites in neighborhoods, they continue to impact the quality of life in the neighborhoods. Sometimes they become destinations for dangerous behaviors, substance abuse issues, and there are some dangerous conditions which are very serious. And this has posed many problems for community members. The properties that have been mentioned here tonight include one on Mariposa and one on Maybelle, very close, both of them very close to schools and very close to public parks. So what you have before you tonight is a discussion of the problems that have surrounded these kinds of properties. This is focusing on stalled construction, particularly residential properties. And the two elements here are that the authors of this colleagues' memo are requesting that this item be referred to Policy and Services to prepare an ordinance that would address two major issues. One, the imposition of time limits for building permits, because in many cases, they have been in limbo for many, many years. In both, in these particular properties, it's at least five to eight to 10 years. And to also determine what daily penalties for projects that exceed the life of the building permit should be. There is also a comment in the staff report that it might be useful to look at a later point regarding how this kind of an issue might be relevant to construction projects in commercial areas. So with that general overview, with the detail regarding the ordinance that we would like to see come forward, I would like to move the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
A memo recommendation.
A memo recommendation, right? I'll second it. You wish to speak to your motion?
The sense of concern and urgency has become very clear by very articulate community members who have simply had enough of these kinds of conditions. And I think it's extremely important that we move forward with this recommendation for further study and action because of the impacts on our neighborhoods. And they've been very articulate in their comments, very patient, and now is the time to call for action to address these kinds of issues. We all live in different parts of Palo Alto. We have, in our own neighborhoods, seen occasional examples of stalled construction. And this particular colleagues' memo is asking and recommending that this issue and all the issues around it be directly addressed. So I hope that my colleagues will see the value in this memo, and I want to thank the very patient and burdened community members who've been dealing with this for so long.
Well, I'd like to speak briefly to it as well. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. When we drive around Palo Alto in our own neighborhoods, this really is a quality-of-life issue. I've experienced this, frankly, next door, where, you know, the fencing goes up and stays up for five years, and nothing happens. It's a vacant lot. They fence the trees, and they just fence everything, and no one tells them that they need to take the fencing down. I've heard from numerous people over the years about how there's a stalled construction project next to their house in their neighborhood. What are we going to do about it? There's been several in my neighborhood, and, you know, everyone's like, when are they going to fix this? And it never happens. So I really thank you for dealing with this kind of a quality-of-life issue, because that's what it is. It's good government and a quality-of-life issue, and I'm really glad we're moving forward on this. The only question I did ask is included in this concept, will the notion of if fencing goes up, will there be a time limit if there's no construction going on? Will that be included in dealing with that issue at some point?
I could address that issue. What we would enforce is from the time the permit was issued, that's where we would start monitoring the activity. If there was no activity within six months or the prescribed time, then we would start the enforcement from there.
Okay. Aaron Ackman, interim planning director. The other thing I would add, if someone puts up a fence without actually having construction going on, there could be violations to our fence ordinance depending on the placement of it and the type of fence. So we'd be able to go after that with a different avenue.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Well, I would echo the mayor's comments. This is long overdue, and I certainly sympathize with the Woolleys, having that, an incredible eyesore and a danger right next door. I am rather surprised this wasn't already in place. But I have another question that one of you might be able to answer. At the end of any of these construction projects, and certainly the street that the mayor has referenced, which is sealed, has probably had half the houses come down over the last 10 years. Has anything been required of the person who's constructing it, of whomever is responsible, for repair of either the sidewalks or the street after it's completed? And if not, why not? And if not, if something like that would be comfortable for the maker and the seconder of this to explore that idea, I'd like to see that as well. While they're talking about it, let me continue to add to it, that I think it is really a disservice to the community that whenever this is done, the heavy trucks have been there for a long period of time, the sidewalk is usually, frankly, a mess by that time, and the street needs to be repaired as well. It seems as though you have given far more to the contractor than is necessary.
Peter Perniagad again, Development Services. Typically, when a new home is constructed, a public works encroachment permit or street work permit is associated with the building permit, and that would be subject to the same terms and conditions as the building permit. In order to finalize the building permit, you need to close out the public works encroachment permit, so we would tie the two together.
I don't think that answers the question.
Could you repeat the question?
Well, at the end of this, if you have a sidewalk that must be repaired, reconstructed, which they frequently do, and the street needs repairs, is there any penalty to the contractor in that case? Is there any reparation that goes on? I can hear that that goes with what we're discussing, but it doesn't address the actual cost to the city of what has been the result of the sidewalk and the street being in disrepair.
Councilmember Niss, City Attorney Molly Stump. It sounds like maybe we will work together as a staff to look at what our current permits would provide in terms of a remedy. And to the extent that that's not available, we may be able to make some adjustments or look at other actions to recover the city for damage or loss to its right-of-way and other facilities. That's an area of work where we are trying to do a little bit more these days, being a little bit more mindful to seek the financial contribution from folks who have contributed to damaged the city property.
So do we need to look for a friendly amendment to the motion on that? Or is that something you can come back to us without adding to the motion?
I think that that level of direction that you've given us is sufficient for us to come back with some more information.
And hopefully by the end of the year.
Well, if folks would like, if council members would like, we could come back to, I think the colleagues' memo asks that the ordinance go to committee, and we could bring that information back with that.
To the committee?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, I won't repeat a lot of the things that my colleagues have said and that members of the public have said, because I agree with all of them. But for me, this was important for kind of two main reasons. The first was to provide an incentive for builders and owners to complete their projects in a reasonable and responsible amount of time. We didn't have that in place previously, and it's led to some unfortunate circumstances. And it's important, you know, to get that ordinance passed as quickly as possible while it goes through our process. And the second thing was, the second important fact or factor was, you know, give neighbors a reasonable expectation for the disruption, for the duration of the disruption that's going to occur in their neighborhoods and their lives. And, you know, we all, I think we've all experienced construction projects in our neighborhoods that have gone on for far longer than they probably should have. And one of the hardest parts is just that unknown of when it'll be completed and, you know, when our neighborhoods will be back to normal. And so I think this staff memo, colleagues' memo, excuse me, you know, begins to take us down that path. I think it's good that staff will come back, and they'll go through the Policy and Services Committee for a full vetting and for additional, you know, additions by colleagues. And I look forward to it, coming back to full council, for us to vote on it.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, thank you. I think Councilmember Price mentioned the word blight, and that's exactly what these kinds of projects are. And so this should have come forward sooner. I'm sorry, it hasn't. And I'll take responsibility as well as anybody else for not coming forward sooner. I'm glad to be able to pile onto this colleagues' memo. I'm glad it is before us. And perhaps this is a friendly amendment, or perhaps it's just something staff can bring back to Policy and Services. But going hand-in-hand with enforcing the timeliness of construction projects is code enforcement. And we really need to bolster our code enforcement efforts. One example that Councilmember Price is well aware of and City Manager Keen was a project on Everett that had been going on for years, and had been turned into code enforcement and code enforcement, code enforcement. And it was definitely stalled, and it was exceedingly unsafe. It wasn't even fenced, had an open basement, and it really took extensive involvement at the highest levels to get code enforcement to address that situation. So I think code enforcement involvement would help to bolster this situation. And so, well, look to staff. Do you want to just handle this in the same manner as Councilmember Lissa's suggestion, or would you like it as a friendly amendment to clarify direction?
Councilmember Holman, I heard what you said, and I generally can agree with your comments, but I'm not certain exactly what it is you'd like to see the staff come back to the committee with.
Code enforcement, if there is a delay or a site isn't kept neat and tidy, it is the same situation. It's the same outcome. It's a blighted site. It's an unkempt site. It is an attractive nuisance. All the same things that a stalled construction site is. And if neighbors call and complain about, or whoever, causing complaints about a stalled construction site, oftentimes they're going to be talking about code enforcement. So if we don't have code enforcement involvement in these projects, in these stalled projects, I think we're going to be kind of like missing a little, missing a little strike there.
So what we need to do in a situation like that, where there's some difficulty at a site, is to identify what the relevant codes are. And in this particular case, the council members' questions and the community questions about these stalled sites led us to understand that there was a gap in our code, and that's what's being proposed to be filled with a new ordinance. There are other, many code requirements and permit requirements that apply. So if there are complaints about a site, the first thing to do is to look at that set of requirements and see. And you're absolutely right, that code enforcement is the initial, that unit within the planning department are the initial folks who get involved and speak with the project owners about the problems and usually resolve them at that level. If they can't be resolved at that level, they sometimes go up the chain and may even come to the city attorney's office for formal enforcement action. So that is the procedure that would apply. And if in the future we identify other gaps in our code where we are not able to, in fact, identify a local ordinance or a state law requirement, that goes to a particular problem, then we will bring that back to the council so that you can determine if you want to add some additional policies.
So just one clarifying question here. So when this comes to Policy and Services, there will be a connector between the relevance of this stalled construction ordinance that will be in place, that will be presented then, and code enforcement, the relationship of the two?
Oh, absolutely. The ordinance is enforceable. A violation of city ordinances is a misdemeanor unless it's otherwise provided in the code, and we would not suggest to provide otherwise. Generally, these things are enforced, you know, through the code enforcement unit and through nuisance actions if necessary.
Okay, good. Good, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I certainly agree with my colleagues and with the members of the audience who've identified places in town where blight in neighborhoods affect the quality of life and the need to be able to do something about it. I'm a little concerned about the suggestions that have been made by pointing to, what is it, San Mateo, San Bruno, who have existing ordinances, which by putting dates on it and fines associated with it would create the right incentives to solve the problem. I'm thinking of the city. If we were subject to this law, we have two projects, Mitchell Park and El Camino Park, which are both well over a year behind. We would be getting fined $1,000 a day. And of course, we'd say, that's not our fault. And with a lot of projects that get postponed, the homeowner ends up saying, wait a minute, that's not my fault. Contractor has changed. There's an illness, a death, a divorce. Something happened that led to this. Now, does imposing a fine per day help resolve the issue? Or does it exacerbate? I guess I'm concerned we could create a situation where the homeowner is between two pushes. On one side, the city's saying, we're fineing you every single day, this goes on. And a contractor's saying, oh, it's the city's fault. You want me to get that done quicker? That's going to cost you 25% more. So we're creating a squeeze on a homeowner who might have a valid issue. So my only concern here is that when this goes to the Policy and Services Committee, we look at the consequences of the incentives we want to create, and that maybe code enforcement is a way of dealing with issues of blight or quality of life in the neighborhood. But maybe there are other types of incentives that can deal with issues where the property owner is going through a life change that has disrupted plans.
Councilmember Shepherd.
First off, thank you for, staff did give us some good help trying to navigate this. And when Councilmember Price and I were first introduced to a couple houses that were grossly stalled, one in her neighborhood is sort of looking normal compared to the one in the neighborhood that we have pictures for tonight. I was really impressed by how the city attorney addressed the issues. We don't really have much teeth right now to move projects along and get them back into, you know, activity. And so I wanted to thank staff for that. And also, when I would sit in those meetings with the neighbors, I was appalled to hear what they were doing. When they would hear noises over at the vacant property, I believe in the South Gate neighborhood, they would turn on their outdoor lights, you know, and try to shoo off whoever might be over there. And... And, and they didn't want to inconvenience the police because they thought, well, we'll just see if this works out, or we'll let the dog go off for a walk or something. And so this is what really spoke to me about the type of quality of life that has really been disturbed and disrupted for these immediate neighbors that are around some of the projects. And we have since then gotten a couple of emails from other projects that are going on in Palo Alto. So although I know that there's nothing that can happen with currently stalled projects because this is for only active permits, I think that would get picked up going forward, I, I think that this really is a useful tool to, to bring back and to vet, just with what Councilmember Schmidt was saying, let's vet it, to make sure that we're having the right type of experience in our neighborhoods that we intend to and want to. And then Erin, you did give us a little bit of timing because all of our ordinances are coming back in January, but you're not sure this will be able to come back and join in with that. Do you just want to explain a little bit about the timing?
I'll actually pass that question to Peter since he's running the building code revision.
Thank you. So we are currently underway. We will be bringing to the council in October the first reading for the building code amendment. This is a very high priority for us, and we plan on taking it immediately. It won't make it into this code cycle because it may push us past the January 1 deadline, but we intend to pursue this straight away.
Okay, so I just wanted colleagues to know that it was not going to be with the code deadlines is coming up because that already has a cycle to it, and this would be disruptive to that cycle. But that it is an urgency, and it will be coming forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
I'm in favor of the proposed ordinance, and I commend my colleagues for bringing it forward. And I won't repeat all of the, the good arguments that have been made. Instead, I just want to focus on one thing. We've been talking all along about how this could not apply to existing projects, and I would like to say, inquire from the city attorney, why not? Why can't we find something under the idea that this is a public, that some of these things have become public nuisances and that we should be able to have some way of requiring them to, to move forward in some way or other?
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. So first of all, I think the more precise way to describe it is that the, a new ordinance would apply when a new permit is issued. So there are some projects that have had their permits expire, will have to renew permits, and then new requirements then across the code will then apply. So that could come to apply to an existing project in that way. With respect to projects with active permits, we are not without tools. And the, the two projects that were particularly brought to our attention earlier this year, we have been able to work with the existing codes that we have to raise a number of issues and to move those projects forward. So we will continue to do that, and we can also look at what you've described. I think what you're referring to generally is the general nuisance law, and there is an ability, when things get to that level, to go ahead and bring a nuisance action. And that's something that we would explore where appropriate.
So to be specific, if we have a situation like the one next door to the Woolies, where there is no presently active permit, but there is a, a disaster, an ISO is just sitting there, certainly we must have some remedies available to us.
The city attorney's office has been corresponding with the owner, as has the Development Center and Planning, and identified a number of issues, potential violations on that site. I'm not sure that it's still out of permit, that site. Do we have an active permit on the site now?
I'd have to double check our permit database.
We had, we had believed that we were very close to the owner pulling a new permit and moving forward. But we are actively working on that site through the existing codes that we have. I'm happy to share that correspondence with you, councilmember.
Okay. Would it be appropriate or desirable for us to add to the motion for the city attorney's office to explore any other tools that might be appropriate for us to enact with respect to projects that are in existence but are presently out of permit?
Well, again, we're, we're not without tools. We do have the general nuisance law. The standards are fairly rigorous to satisfy bringing in action on that basis.
Yes.
And so we have been working with the owner, and we have informed the owner that that is a possibility, depending on what happens on the site. So we're working on that project. I, I can take your direction without a formal motion. I think it's something that we would do, and we would be very eager to identify to council if there are additional ordinances that we think would be helpful.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Burt.
Just following on to Councilmember Klein's questions, I would say that specifically we should be looking at modifications to fencing requirements. Because that's basically when you've got a chain link fence in a exposed construction site, that's a big part of the problem. And we don't seem to have any mechanism that requires construction projects after a certain point in time or that are stalled for property owners to put up some kind of a screening fencing that is at least aesthetically not ideal, but less egregious. So that's, that's the area that I would recommend to be looked at specifically. If that needs to be part of the motion, can do that, or if staff thinks they can bring that forward outside the motion, that's fine, too.
I think that should be part of the motion.
All right. So I would propose, offer an amendment that staff also return with ordinance revision, draft ordinance revisions to address improved fencing of stalled construction sites.
Councilmember Price, do you accept that?
Yes, I did want to make a quick comment, if I may. As long as it just says improved fencing, and it's not more prescriptive, and that's fine, because there may be some safety issues, but I'm fine with that amendment.
It's fine with me, so that's accepted. Councilmember Price, I saw you had your letter, do you have another comment?
Yes, I realize that, you know, it's habit. I said staff recommendation, it's colleagues' memo recommendation, and I don't see how that was conveyed. I just want to make that correction. Maybe it's not necessary. Okay.
I think it's fine up there. So seeing no further lights, if we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. And now moving on to item number eight. We have several speakers. The first speaker is Jim Barbera.
For the item number eight?
Yes, for item number eight. Welcome, Jim.
I just, this is the first time I'm doing this, I'm a little nervous. I just want to applaud the city council for putting EV friendliness on the city's radar, and I just want to encourage you to address the various types of EV drivers that are going to be using the infrastructure here. The first is, of course, Palo Alto homeowners. I'm a, I'm here as a, I'm here as a resident and a electric car driver, and a, so I would, I'm hopeful that you will streamline the permitting process, maybe even moving it to an, an online process, if that's possible. And require new construction to be at least pre-wired or pre-plumbed for a 40-amp circuit in the garage or the parking space for the electric vehicle. And allocate panel space for, for that circuit. The second, I would like to move on to the Palo Alto residents that live in multifamily units and how to address their needs. That's a very high percentage of Palo Alto residents, and we want to encourage, we don't, we want to encourage their adoption to electric vehicles as well. So address some percentage of the onsite parking to be prepared for electric vehicles. And again, this is to be balanced with the challenge of being an EV-friendly city with out, causing undue hardship to the property owner. So you could maybe consider pre-plumbing as opposed to pre-wiring and various options such as that. We can address the technical merits of those. And then we also want to encourage people who come to Palo Alto from outside the city to work and conduct business in Palo Alto. So looking at workplace, workplace refueling and also public charging infrastructure. And I think the key thing here is to make sure that when somebody's considering driving their electric car, because of where, the limitations of where battery technology is today, it is a decision that you can't just make without thinking because they're not like gas stations, you can't just go somewhere and assume that they're always there just yet. But the idea would be that the driver can come to Palo Alto knowing that they'll have a, a place to charge their car. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sven Thesen.
I just want to quickly say thank you for the colleagues' memo. I contacted the four major electric auto associations here, Plug-in America, Bay Area Leagues, Silicon Valley Electric Auto Association, and they'd like to amend what you're saying, select that one right there, to amend, to increase from just addressing residences to parking lots, and then they continue to support streamlining and reducing the fees, and also to look at a curbside residential program as just a pilot program to keep it going on a case-by-case basis. In that I've already got a neighbor who's not here tonight, I'm not sure where he is, with a presentation that wants to talk about how he would like to do it because he has a very large truck. But I've got another neighbor who couldn't make it, but they felt so keen, they made a film that I'd like to show, because I'm only allowed this very short. So this is a testimony of Jeff and Christina Vetter and their family, and I was hoping for, for sound.
Hi, my name is Jeff Vetter. I live at 333 Wieland in Palo Alto, right around the corner from this electric charger. This is my public testimony for the Palo Alto City Council meeting, item eight on the agenda. Renee, please plug us in. Last year, we drove a leaf at one of our neighbor's electric vehicle open houses, and we liked it so much, we went and bought one. But now, in the meantime, while we're still working out charger logistics at our house, we've been using this curbside charger as our primary means of charging our leaf. I believe this is the nation's only permitted curbside EV charger, and I'm glad to use it.
My name is Christina Vetter. Jeff and I liked the leaf so much that we decided to sell our other car, which got about 20 miles to the gallon, and replaced it with a Tesla. We usually charge the Tesla at work, but occasionally we charge it here, too. The fact that we have an EV charger accessible to us has played a key role in our ability to drive electric vehicles. So far, we've driven 3,000 carbon-free miles, which translates into 3,000 pounds of carbon dioxide saved.
Imagine if everyone in the city of Palo Alto could do this!
While we are pleased with the direction of council's colleagues' memo, we strongly encourage the city of Palo Alto to establish a simple, affordable permitting procedure for residential curbside chargers.
We love this curbside EV charger!
Okay, so I understood that they were allowed to present, then I could talk, but I think that's my, our time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the moving. So Jeff and Christina Vetter, were they going to speak too, or is that, was that them speaking?
That is them speaking, so you just got me and them on the one three-minute period.
Got it. Jeb Eddy?
I should put on my bicycle helmet because I, as some of you know, because some of you have ridden it, multiple of you have seen it, I am the proud owner of the fastest electric bicycle in the city of Palo Alto. You're supposed to have a motor, I do have a motorcycle license, which is required by state law for an electric bicycle in the category that I own. It's a lot of fun. I have ridden Greg's. I just, I want to applaud all of you on the council here for trying to make Palo Alto the number one city in the country on a lot of this stuff. A, an application that Sven did not mention on iPhones and iPads is called Plug Share. It's free, and it shows people like me and other people, the city of Palo Alto, of places where people with electric cars can go and get a charge. And it shows the great majority of them are 110 power, where it will take, you know, you've got to bring your lunch and some entertainment to do this. The higher-powered ones, the ones that would be publicly available, are scarce. And so I want to applaud the work that you're doing. And we've got just a couple of pictures here from our Unitarian Church, where I'm one of the three co-chairs of the Green Sanctuary Committee. So we put in a free, public charging station at the back of the church. Minor electrical plumbing. Guess what the biggest expense was?
Permit.
Permit.
The permit from the city of Palo Alto. I think, at least for nonprofit organizations, we could do better. Here's a picture of it. The card on the right is just for gardening, but there is the charging station and the disconnect box and the fuse box and various things. People just pull their cars up, plug in, and if they choose to pay for it, they may. We do not have a card system or anything that, that costs people money. So we're around 1,500 kilowatt-hours so far. You took that picture today, maybe? So it's current. And total strangers show up. We have no idea who owns these cars, but we're very pleased to offer it. And it's the start, we think, of an interesting ramp up, a kind of multiplier that we want. So we support the think-ahead ideas for new construction. The memo already asked for streamlining, we're totally, totally, totally supportive of that. And this notion of curbside recharging, right now there's only one. How about putting a zero after that one? So maybe we could expand the program to 10. I know that's a typo, right? You meant to put in 10, but somehow the document only says 1. Maybe we could expand that a bit. And we want to adjust the pricing for individual, for homeowners and nonprofit organizations. The end. I'll come back. I want to show you this, which is Buckminster Fuller's model of the world.
Jeb, just stay there one second. Councilmember Niss would like to ask your question.
Yes, Liz.
I should ask you about that. If someone wants to pay, how do they?
There's a sign right next to the charging station that says, "We invite you to pay if you care to. Please put some money or a check in an envelope and drop it through the mail slot into the church office."
Do you give them some idea of what the amount would be, or how much, just if you feel like donating, donate?
Yeah, this, to be honest, the sign hasn't been posted yet.
Oh, I thought it was.
Because, because it's, it's what we're doing, and just like you guys, we're all volunteers. But we've had one person already come through.
Sven.
We've had one person already come through and give us a $50 check relating to when you give free curbside charging, since I have that curbside charger at my house. Tesla drivers have given me three bottles of wine so far. The total value of that wine, because I had to look it up to be able to say this, is $90. Okay? So the, the joy, I, my electricity, because I have solar, costs rough between, is four and a half cents per kilowatt-hour. So that means when I drive my electric leaf, it costs me one penny to drive. So when I give away electricity out in curbside to drive carbon, I feel like this is, I'm, I'm doing wonderful things. And I have lots of people come up to the door and say, oh my goodness, look at this, this is great. Why, why can't our city do it? And I understand, here's two joys. The city of Berkeley has already talked to staff about how to do it. And we, that, to me, is, that's making, that's a sign of leadership, when another city asks you how to do this. And I understand right now you guys are facing a lot of parking problems, but this does not generate a parking problem, it just shifts parking around. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you enjoy your wine.
Richard Castle. Richard Castle?
I'm Richard Castle. I've been in the electrical business for 50 years, put in hundreds of thousands of megawatts of power, and I've been involved in UL, National Electric Code, Safety Codes, all of that stuff, so I know this stuff backwards and forwards. So, and I was asked to put in this, have this EEV charger for the Palo Alto Unitarian Church put in, and I was shocked to find out how much it costs for the permit. If you look at your code, it says, the price code, it says that they would charge you $94 to put in a plug, and, and/or $90, $90 for putting in a plug, a wall plug, or $94 if you put in the power for a heater, or something like that. But if you put the name "electric vehicle charger" after that, the resident would have to pay $250, or if you happen to be commercial or nonprofit, you have to pay $459. These are all the same. The electrons don't know the difference between 112 amps and 120 volts, whether it goes to an EV charger, or whether it goes to your dryer. And likewise, the power levels at 240 volts at 30 amps, those are all available mostly on most houses, and should be able to be put in, according to this, for $94. Now presumably, the code is set up so that people, I mean, the permits are set up so that they will follow the codes, and that codes will be done. Now, if they're doing it for $94 for most of these things, they should be able to do the same thing for chargers. Chargers will have to be UL-approved, they have to have the same safety features as any of this other equipment, as your, as your dryer, or oven, or whatever, has to have the same requirements, so there really shouldn't be any difference in price. So the reason, the question is, why is the extra fee for EEV, for these electric chargers? And the second issue is that if you, they're commercial or nonprofit, you have to put in this disconnect. Now, the disconnect may be convenient for somebody, but it's clearly not a safety issue because if you're a resident, you don't have to put it in. It says right there, you don't have to put that thing in. So why do you have to pay to put in another device? And most of the expense we had there was in fact putting in that break, in that disconnect, because we already had a service that would provide that power in that location, and we were just going to switch it over. But we had to put in a disconnect with a very fancy sign that costs a lot of money because it's an engraved sign. Seems to me that the permits should recover their energy, I mean, their cost. And if it costs $495, everybody should have to pay $495 to put in an electrical outlet.
Thank you. Arthur Keller?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I just wanted to point out to you that the draft transportation element of the comprehensive plan, which hopefully will come to you real soon now, we look, we had it in the end of August, however, there's a lot of comment on other items from members of the public, so we continued it to get their feedback, but that, and that will come back to us, I think, in the middle of October, and then hopefully to you soon. That draft transportation element has in it a wording that says that we're proposing that for all new construction, that the all parking spaces be pre-wired for any kind, they don't have to put in the electric vehicle chargers, but when you pre-wire in new construction, it's actually much cheaper, and having to retrofit it later is much more expensive. So we figured this would add very little to the cost of the, of building the new construction for these parking spaces, and would enable, essentially future-proof them. Part of also what we said is that for commercial uses, they would have to put in a certain number, to be determined by ordinance, certain number of electric vehicle service equipment for the chargers themselves. But that for non, for residential, they just have to put in the conduit and wiring and circuit breaker, enable that to, the electric vehicle service equipment to be added later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it, I can't read the last part, but is it Eric or Enid? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Eric Gutfeldt, a long-term Palo Alto resident, and I recently bought my wife a new car, a Ford C-Max Energy Plug-in Hybrid. And I would like to, so there, there's my car, new car, and in front of my house, and it's, it's, I would like to charge it, you know, with a charger hooked up to the house, but unfortunately, we also have a large truck that lives in our driveway. This is part of my wife's work, it's a tow vehicle for horses, and it would take up two parking places if we put it on the street and parked our energy in, in the driveway. So what I'd like to do, I would like to propose to expand the experimental home charging station, and put in a curbside charging station at our home, and just because it would be charging our car, I propose to have, to be able to charge two cars. And that way, to increase the, the, the number of electric cars that could be charged at home stations. And depending, it would be for free for anyone that would, would want to charge up their car at our property, although depending on the amount of use, if it ends up requiring a lot of use, we, we might ask for a donation.
He wants my wine.
Well, thank you. Okay. All right. And now we'll return to council. Oh, we've one more? Do we have more? Come on up. Whoever has one more, come on up.
Thank you, and sorry that I'm running a little late.
Craig Lewis?
Yes, Craig Lewis. I am the founder and executive director of the Clean Coalition. Those of you who have been sitting on council for more than a year are probably have seen me up here at least once or twice. I am here to encourage you to support electric vehicle charging wherever and whenever possible. I am an electric vehicle driver, and I think that the electric vehicles are a perfect opportunity for Palo Alto to extend its leadership. Palo Alto has been one of the first cities, really, in the world to go carbon-free, and it is, it is an awesome achievement. And the electric vehicle allows that achievement to extend into the transportation sector. So right now, we've got carbon-free in the electric sector, electricity sector, but by utilizing electric vehicles, we get to extend that carbon-free achievement into the transportation sector. The vehicle charger at Sven Thiesen's house, I have personally benefited from that, I've used it. I've been on a, in a situation where I was pretty much out of fuel, out of electricity in my battery, and was able to plug in at his house. Also, the Clean Coalition is based in Palo Alto Square, and I can tell you that I know many of the electric, many of the other electric vehicle owners in, that are housed in Palo Alto Square, and I can tell you, there's a lot of frustration because there is not an electric vehicle charging opportunity at Palo Alto Square. So I would like to encourage the council to also think of ways to make sure that we can get electric vehicle chargers into the retrofit environment, and not necessarily when we have gracious homeowners like Sven Thiesen and the gentleman who spoke just before me, who are willing to pay to install these things, and also to pay for the electricity. But we need to, we need to get the electric vehicles into the commercial space and into the public space. We need more electric vehicle chargers around downtown, and in all commercial buildings, and certainly in Palo Alto Square. So just, I see that my time is up here, so I will just thank you for your leadership so far in Palo Alto, and encourage you to extend that leadership into the transportation sector to get carbon-free driving, carbon-free miles with electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll return to council, and I'll kick the memo off. So, you know, one of our core principles is clearly environmental sustainability, and as Craig just said, carbon-neutral electricity is a huge accomplishment, and it really is. And now to build, extend this into the transportation sector is where we should be going with this. And I think most of our colleagues hopefully agree with that. Over the last, I don't know, I would say year or so, first of all, I've noticed several things. I've noticed that it's actually hard to find a charging station in Palo Alto. You know, they're full all the time. I was up at Tesla on Friday with the mayor of Quebec touring it, he brought like four journalists. EV and electric vehicles are the wave of the future, and a lot of people feel like that way. And it's incumbent upon us to figure out what are the obstacles to EV charging, to owning electric vehicles, and get rid of those obstacles. And that's really what this colleague's memo is about. And when we wrote this, we actually also invited in the colleague's memo our colleagues to add things to this motion. I don't want people to think that they shouldn't, they should go ahead and add a lot of things for policy and services to look at. And that's really the goal here, is let's figure out, as a council, what we can do to remove the obstacles to owning EVs in Palo Alto. And I think what we really need to make them do is make it convenient, easy, and economical. And that's, so if you look, and there's different ranges. I mean, you look at the Tesla, which is fairly expensive, has a great range, you can probably charge it home in the evening, and you don't really need that many charging stations around it, unless you're going on a long trip. If you have the Leaf, on the other hand, you know, they say you get 100-mile range, but it's probably more in the order of 50 miles, frankly. So if you own a Leaf, you really need to be able to charge it in different places. You get, you get better?
You get much better than that.
So a lot of people have told me that they don't get much better than 50, but maybe you get a lot better, it depends on your driving. But the point is, with a Leaf, I think you have range restriction, which is the point, and you really do need to have that ability to charge. And I've heard things about the Volt, same thing, range restriction, a lot of that. And a lot of people therefore go to the Plug-in Hybrid for that reason, because of that. And what we'd really like to do is to make it easy for people, long-term, to just buy pure electric vehicles and feel comfortable with that. So how do we do that as a city? And I think there's been some angst and some sense that we haven't really been at the forefront anymore. We were, but we're sort of no longer there. And I think what this colleague's, the purpose of this colleague's memo is to say, let's look at our permitting, let's look at, you know, chargers in the neighborhood. I think that's a fine thing to look at, I don't think that's something you decide tonight, clearly. I mean, there could be issues of traffic and parking, and drawing people, too many people in that particular area in a neighborhood. So there are concerns, but I definitely think we should look at all of these issues and explore them. And that's one of the things that I think that Policy and Services should make a big push, is how do we go ahead and explore all these different things, and have staff identify what are the issues? And one of the issues that clearly comes up is if you buy a Leaf, for instance, they're fairly inexpensive. In fact, if you lease them, you can basically figure that if you were to save the gasoline, and if you were commuting and crossing the bay, for instance, the tolls in the gasoline alone pretty much cover the cost of the lease on the vehicle, which pretty much makes it free when you take the $7,000 tax credit, which would be your initial down payment, which you get back from the state. So it seems to me you could own a Leaf for free if you had a lot of tolls that you had to pay, or very close to it. So one of the expenses on something like that is obviously the permitting charge and the retrofit of your house. Frankly, if, you know, and that was one of the things we were looking at here, is if, so staff, and it's not in the colleague's memo, and I want Peter to confirm it, but staff told us that it was a de minimis cost to put in the rough wiring, a new construction on single-family, you know, somewhere in that order of about 100 bucks, and it may be 150 bucks, but roughly in that, in that range. So you could say 100 to 200, if you don't want to be conservative. Whereas if you don't put it in now, and you have to retrofit it, it's 700, $800, is that, or?
Well, these are very rough numbers, and it would really depend.
Higher.
It all depends where your circumvent is and where you want the charge. You may have to be tracing your guts.
So I probably can't have you guys, you know, going in, if that, if that's all right. But, but I mean, I think that's the difference. And so when you're looking at that initial cost to buy, say, the Leaf, and you get that $7,000, and you figure that it's basically free, one of the big obstacles is your permit cost and retrofitting on your single-family cost. So one of the things I thought, and I'm hesitant to say that we should do anything tonight in terms of an actual, but one of the things I do think we should do is set the policy tonight that we are going to require in new residential construction. And I think we should look at everything else at some point, but it's more complicated. And in fact, I've become convinced that we need to send to Policy and Services on multifamily housing rather than make the policy decision on that tonight, because that's a little more complicated. I mean, I think we should definitely get there and go ahead and encourage that, but we have to decide how many chargers, depending on number of units, we have to decide. There's a host of issues with multifamily housing that I think we need to look at, and Policy and Services should look at that. But when it comes to residential, single-family, I think we can make the policy decision that it is better to go ahead tonight and say, yes, we're going to require that, with staff the details to bring that to Policy and Services, to figure out how we're going to go ahead and do that. So with that, I'll move the recommendation that we have in the colleague's memo with taking out multifamily housing, so it would say, to also direct staff to adopt code changes requiring that all new construction of single-family housing install the necessary circuitry for EV chargers, with the details of implementing that policy, to come back to Policy and Services.
Second.
All right. I think I've spoken enough to this. Councilmember Shepherd, if you'd like to speak to it?
Well, this is obviously an outcome of a phone call that I took from Sven a couple weeks ago, and he's alerting us to the fact that he's having a great experience with his charging station out in front of his house, as he's given us a little insight as to how that's been working out. And, and it was a good, good idea to bring this forward because we have had some ordinances that have not been incentivized for these types of installations, and the thing that caught me is how simple and easy and fairly inexpensive, very inexpensive it is to roughen the wiring. So the wiring is there, and then as plugs mature and develop, and maybe a universal plug comes along, the homeowner, you know, can just simply do the final installation of the actual plug-in feature at their leisure if they don't have an electric car already. I also got to have a little chat with him about the fact that as we shift over to electric vehicles, that there still is wear and tear on the roads, and they're bypassing the gas tax, which goes right back into our pothole filling, and that the industry is having that conversation to figure out how to fill that gray area as, as it starts to bleed through a system that we have as you pay at the pump. And so I'm, I'm very impressed by the way our community is able to articulate, not just where they are, but where they want to be, and I was glad to get the wake-up call to get this moved along so that we could celebrate this as our, as the, let's see, what's coming in on the 25th of, that's going to be here?
Charge Across Town.
Charge Across Town.
Charge Home.
No, I don't, we don't have the name of it in here for some reason. On the 25th, they will be coming through to Palo Alto City Hall, and we will be able to celebrate it with, with great determination that we are going to continue to pursue this transition into electric vehicles, and make it so that Palo Alto can make sure that all of the tools are there for this period of, a little bit of disruption as we leave the fossil fuels and get into the next technology for transportation. So I think that this is a proud moment for Palo Alto, and I hope colleagues will support this memo, and give us information as to what they would like to also include in the different bullet points we have here.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, I fully support the thrust of this initiative, and I have a couple questions, comments, and then additions. So first, I just want to make sure I was clear, and we all are, in which of these items will be going to Policy and Services Committee?
So all of them, in fact, will be going to the Policy So all of them, in fact, will be going to the Policy and Service Committee. The only thing we were going to make was a policy choice on that new single-family residential cut, roughin would in fact have to be, you know, have the roughin electricity for it. Does that make sense to you, Councilmember?
Well, I don't, if, if it's going to go to Policy and Services, then I'm a little unclear on how that's distinguished from the other things that are here. I mean, they're all going to go have Policy and Services Committee review. We're going to have a recommendation, a concept for each of these. Staff will come to PNS with certain more specific recommendations. PNS will review them and then make their recommendations to council, so.
So I think the difference is in some of them, I think, for instance, that Policy and Services will explore the idea, and the policy decision really isn't made to do it. For instance, the curbside charging. Whereas on this, we make the policy determination that we want to see it, but what that looks like, whether or not it's a building code or a, or a zoning change, is a different issue.
I guess it's a difference between a direction to necessarily have an initiative, but we will yet see the details and, and be able to refine those versus exploration.
Correct.
So that's the two, okay. All right. And then I just wanted to make a couple of comments and then a couple of amendments as encouraged by the makers of the, of the memo. I guess it was just over two years ago that we began a city EV charging initiative and program where we started really trying to have our utilities department incorporate the anticipation of electric vehicles in our future. Really, the first year, year and a half into that, electric vehicles were kind of slow taking off. And this year, it's just started going up like a hockey stick. And it's a really interesting acceleration, particularly in our region. And I think it foretells what will be happening elsewhere. And so now we're, we're at a point where we were asking ourselves two years ago, were we a little ahead of the curve when we started having charging stations installed and you wouldn't always see cars using them, to now, demand is outstripping supply on charging. It's also, demand is outrunning policy. We don't have, the policy's in place and frankly, other cities don't either. These are all new things that we have to think through. And, and I'm really glad we're going to take this on. I want to, I do want to make sure that we're deliberate on it because we don't want to stumble and have anything that is, ends up being detrimental to our progress. So I would like to propose two additional amendments. First, that staff return to Policy and Services Committee and subsequently to the council with alternatives on a pilot curbside EV charging program. And that does not predetermine council action on it. Second, that staff return to Policy and Services and subsequently the council on, with a draft program to bring about widespread, or how shall I say this? Bring about greater implementation of commercial EV charging stations. Potentially including utilities department or other city incentives. And may I speak to it briefly? Well, I guess I let you see if you.
I would accept it.
Okay. And is there a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And can I speak to it briefly?
Absolutely.
And so on the second one, this is really, I think, a pretty large issue. As we heard a couple of speakers talk about this, we have electric vehicle owners who aren't being able to drive their vehicles to Palo Alto because they can't charge up when they get to work. I had occasion to be at a number of business meetings at Palo Alto Square earlier this year, and there were a number of people there who knew I was on the council and had three different people approach me saying, what can you do to help us on this? And as I asked more deeply into it, came to realize we really don't have any tools to be able to cause a property owner or a business owner to keep up with the times. I mean, as the workforce. There may be at certain points in times where in an ideal world, we'll have market forces that will help drive this, but that's not necessarily going to do the whole trick. It could lag the demand more than we would like and have uneven implementation of a pretty important initiative in our community. So I'm not quite sure what the best form should be. I wouldn't rule out having existing commercial establishments above a certain scale have to have a certain number of these EV chargers. The other component to this that we'll have to think about is how do we make the regulation dynamic? Because today's demand is not next year's demand, and we don't want to have to rewrite our code every year. And so that would be part of the challenge here is to figure out how to structure something that would be able to respond with increasing demand over time. And so I don't think it's an easy task, but I think it's an important one.
Councilmember Ness.
Mine will be brief. I certainly support this. I have one question, however, for staff. The amount that we're charging for permits is based on what?
It actually depends on the type of EVSC.
Do we have a schedule of some kind?
Yes, yes. So I can walk you through that. So basically, for residential EVSC permit includes a plan check and the inspection. It's a flat $249 fee. For commercial, it depends on the type. There's one, two, three, and four. And the first two types are $459 plus $92 per charging station. And for types three and four, it's $649 plus $140 per charging station. I spoke to Larry Perlin, the former chief building official, about the thought process that went into this. He assured me that they went through a rigorous nexus process to determine these. I have yet to look at that nexus, but that could be part of the direction if it forthcoming going forward.
I think we might want to look at it again.
Sure thing.
It sounds as though there's little to actually base that on. And I don't know how many charging stations we have, but it's clear that we don't have enough. And I'm somewhat puzzled that the church paid, did you say, Jeb, almost 500?
$459.
It seems, it seems like a lot. So perhaps we can bring that up at the same time.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to what we have before us there. And it would read as follows. In the latter half of point two, it says, greater implementation of EV charging stations. And I would like to recommend that we add greater implementation of EV charging stations and/or EV charging banks of stations. That's the first part. And then the last sentence to read following, including utilities department or city incentives, to add a sentence, keep that there, to keep that as stated, to add the sentence, to ask staff to consider revising fee structure based on the number of stations at potential EV station banks.
I'm fine with that. Councilmember Shepherd, I'm going to ask Councilmember Burt too, if he's all right with it, since it was originally his language.
I'm okay. I think it's getting a little granular. We, remember, we want to, it's fine for us to give comments to staff that would, give them ideas on what to come back with, but I don't want to be prescriptive in advance. So I, I think this is, it's all right, but I think it's over granular.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I guess the issue in my mind, it's, it's a, it's a lack of precise word. I mean, in my mind, I've often thought that banks of EV stations, like when we drive up to a service station, right? But on a much more modest scale, that you would really have that full service opportunity. The second point I wanted to make, not related to the friendly amendment, is that, just to re, just a point of information, as you remember, at the Litten Gateway Project, we did require an on-street EV charging station, and that was wired by the developer as part of the development approval process. And number two, most recently, in the Maybelle Senior Affordable Housing Project, we did require two on-street residential parking opportunities that would be paid for by the developer of the site, that would be available to members of the community. So we do have those two examples where we're taking incremental steps to increase these opportunities in the public right of way. So I just wanted to, couldn't resist pointing out those two examples. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, thank you, and appreciate the memo. I have a clarification on number five. And it's just, it's, maybe it's a nit and maybe it's not. It just sort of seems odd to me that we're referring this to Policy and Services, but it says in the motion, announced that the EV celebration to be hosted tomorrow, day after tomorrow, I guess that is, that Palo Alto will be a leader in the nation in the installation of EV stations by mandate, all new housing units will be required to install the necessary roughin circuitry. So we aren't enacting that or taking that action tonight. We're referring to Policy and Services. And the other thing is that it's not all new housing units because we aren't including multifamily or mixed use. So I just don't want us to say something that isn't true.
Why don't we say anything that isn't true, Councilmember Holman?
I'm sorry?
We did talk about, at least I talked about, that the goal here is to make the policy decision, but the details will be left up to Policy and Services.
I think you should say single-family housing.
And I will say, I will say, single-family housing.
Okay.
I agree we should say that.
So, so we're amending?
Yes.
Number five to say all new single-family?
That is correct.
Housing units?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, good. And then in the friendly amendment, I think it's number one. When we get to that?
You mean, Pat's one. You won't go down to Pat's?
Yeah, Pat's, yeah, Pat's one. Okay. The intention there, it's number two. It's the first amendment incorporated into the motion. Number two, it's directing staff, blah, 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 of implementation of EV charging stations at commercial facilities. And I'm wondering if the maker would include their multifamily and mixed use, because this is only commercial that's referenced here. Wouldn't we want to include all those kinds of developments?
Yes.
Okay. So we're adding in multifamily and mixed use.
And that then still has to be acceptable to the original maker's.
It's fine.
Okay.
And then my only other comment is just following up on members of the public's comments and Councilmember Ness's questions about the rates. So looking forward to clarity on, on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, great discussion, how to move away from gas-powered transportation, which in the, you know, next decades is going to be the most important change we can make in the green economy. Two things. We're talking about what we can do. You know, the advantage of a gas-powered vehicle is there are gas stations at every crossroads in the country, and every street and road and highway in the country has gas stations, because there are incentives to sell gas. You make money when you sell gas. We are approaching this through mandates of saying, let's provide refueling and mandate it, so no one makes money on it. And I'm wondering if in the long run, we are not inhibiting the growth of popular usage of EV vehicles, because we are mandating leading-edge places where this stuff is free. There's no incentive to create networks through our communities. So maybe part of the policy and services discussion should be, are there, are there regional ways of creating incentives for building refueling spots? Now, the difference is, gas is an expensive commodity and it needs to be transported so it can be sold, and the profit added on to it is a relatively small piece. What we're selling here in the refueling places are space and time. Space in Palo Alto happens to be very valuable. In other parts of the Bay Area, might not be. So we want to make sure that the system we're thinking of, the incentives we're providing, work not just in downtown Palo Alto, but in the communities that we will be utilizing with the electric vehicles. So just an encouragement in the Policy and Services Committee, that the issue of how to build a regional network, how to provide incentives for doing that, is a key part of what we're doing. One last point, I thought Mr. Castle convinced me that maybe our permit fees are high. And the Finance Committee is currently looking at municipal fee schedule cost of services to make sure that we are not charging any fees that cost more than the provision of services. So I would recommend that the next meeting of the Finance Committee on that issue, we discuss permitting fees.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Lalo Perez, we have not brought to the Finance Committee the development and building fees as of yet. We're still working on that process, so that's going to be a little bit separate from the discussions we started, as you referred to the cost of service, but we intend to bring all of that to the Finance Committee down the road.
Councilmember Berman.
So a quick story. For those of you who think it's tough to recharge your EV in Palo Alto, I was up in Anchorage, Alaska, a month ago, and was walking down the street and was floored to turn and see a Tesla in Anchorage, Alaska, which was the last place that I expected to ever see one. But I think that shows you that, you know, electric vehicles, it's still in the early stages, but they really are starting to catch on and get some market penetration. And it is important that we create the, the infrastructure necessary to allow that to happen. And, you know, in Palo Alto, of all places, we should absolutely do that. At the same time, it is important that we do it in a methodical and intelligent manner and not give fodder, you know, not, not trip over ourselves and give fodder to naysayers. And so I am, you know, glad to see that we're moving most of this through Policy and Services to really flesh out. And it was important, I was the one who asked that question of, you know, how much does it cost, or how much might it cost for a homeowner to, you know, put in this wiring ahead of time? And, you know, it was, was good to actually get a number from staff of around, we'll say, on the conservative side, $200, you know, plus or minus, which, which isn't a remarkable burden on somebody who's trying to build a house in Palo Alto where it's already expensive to, to live. So, you know, I'm happy to support the colleague's memo. Thank you guys for writing it and bringing it. Thank you guys for writing it and bringing it. And I'm glad that, at least, we're moving most of it through Policy and Services. And I'll begrudgingly go along with the one bit that we're not, even though I tend to love to have my research first, and as much as possible. But this seems strong enough. And I have no other comments other than that.
All right. Seeing no further lights, if we could vote on the board? And that passes almost unanimously. I'm waiting for someone's light to show up. There we go. That passes unanimously.
I wondered if you want to hear about this before.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Niss did have a comment.
By not voting, I got to make a comment. And thank you, Gail. We did get a very comprehensive letter today from the Air Board, from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, usually referred to as the Air Board. And I do sit on that. And this is essentially a memo to us, talking about the fact that they already have a regional EV readiness plan, which is true. It's one that they've been working on for a long time, very important to the Air Board. They make a number of suggestions in this, primarily at the end. It says, "The district supports and encourages EV efforts like those proposed for Palo Alto. Is happy to partner with the city in demonstrating the vital leadership on this issue that will be necessary to ensure this technology spreads throughout the region." So I think partnering with the Air Board is certainly an excellent idea. And I think we should have this in the record, that they have agreed to do this with us, which I'm pleased about. And they have done a great deal of background on this, to be so-called EV-ready. So thanks, Gail, for bringing that over and calling it to our attention.
All right. Now, moving on to Item Number Nine. We have no speakers on Item Number Nine. Does staff have a staff presentation? If you don't, it's probably okay. I don't think we need a huge staff presentation on that.
No, we don't have a huge staff presentation. I think there were two recommendations that came out of the grand jury report. And staff has complied as of June 26, 2013, with both of them, as they're listed in the report.
All right. Then returning to council, I'll just kick it off and make the staff recommendation as the motion. Second by Councilmember Shepherd. I see no lights. If we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously? And now, that brings us to Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. And we have Councilmember Klein.
Yes, colleagues. Last week, Thursday through Saturday, I attended the meeting of the Environmental Natural Resources Committee of the National League of Cities, held in Pinecrest, Florida, which is a suburb of Miami. And we had set the theme of this meeting at our last meeting of the EENR Committee, to be adaptation, rather than mitigation, which is, of course, many of the things we've been talking about down through the years. Adaptation and resilience, it's a twin sibling. Really recognize that global warming has gone so far that some damage is inevitable, or it's already occurred, as we know, in a variety of ways. And the selection of a place in Miami was particularly appropriate because we've heard, we heard a lot about the problems that South Florida is facing. And I think it's fair to say that they are further along in considering adaptation resilience than anybody else. And that's, I think, primarily because they are further along in facing very serious damage. You've probably seen some maps from time to time showing that areas of the southeast coast, particularly around New Orleans and Miami, may very well be inundated by the Atlantic Ocean or the Gulf of Mexico, not in our lifetimes, but in the lifetimes of our children or grandchildren. And so many of the speakers we heard were government officials, either staff or a couple of elected officials, as to what steps they're taking. Primarily, they talked about the compact of the four southeast Florida counties, and that comprises about 5 million people, as to what steps they're taking with the first-ever cooperation among those four counties, in that sense. And we also heard from a professor at the University of Miami, who has made this field his career, a man about, I'd say, 65, who was very blunt in saying that Miami Beach, Miami are doomed in this century. And he is well-known to all of the other speakers, because he's apparently made this speech before, not just to the people in South Florida, but to national organizations. And he gave us reprints of some of his articles, including one that's about to be published in one of the lead science journals. And he was very compelling. And as the mayor of Key Biscayne, which, who followed him, Key Biscayne, to those who don't know what it is, is in effect one of the barrier islands off the coast of Miami. It's the second or third one as you descend north to south. And he was described to us as going to be an optimist. But it turns out, he in effect said, "I accept all the science, but gee, I got to do something to save my community." So when we think we have problems in a variety of different ways, I kept thinking, wow. The long-term stake of your community is on the line, and what do you do about that? A far greater problem than any we face. And even though I had, I have a lot of contacts in South Florida, I had learned a lot about how deep their problems are, and was impressed by how much they're willing to face it, even though they haven't taken any actions that would really be adaptive, and maybe there aren't any. But in any event, it's something for us all to keep in mind, that in various places around the world, the issue is no longer mitigation, but it really is adaptation. Mitigation, yes, to make sure it doesn't get any worse, but it's already quite bad.
Councilmember Shepherd. Vice Mayor Shepherd.
It's hard to follow that, Larry. So I'm here to bring back some awards. I was down at the League of Cities Annual Conference in Sacramento, up in Sacramento, with Councilmembers Price, Holman, and Niss. And at the very end, they did the Institute for Local Government Awards. Now, one of these is, I know we are all going to love this one, but we got an award for the O-Power that we're doing, that put us on in the best practices category, in trying to get people off of. It is changing behavior. The O-Power is changing measured behavior, with people actually turning off their lights and shutting down their furnace and turning their furnace down. The other award that we were given from the ILG is for greenhouse gas reductions. And this is where Palo Alto just kind of killed it. We reduced our emissions, or reduced greenhouse gas inputs by 52% between 2005 and 2012, according to their measurement. And there was only, like, two cities that were in the double digits for having done reductions.
I think the closest next was like 24%.
26%. Yeah, exactly. It was, I kept reading it and going over to see if maybe I looked at it wrong, but it's right here. They printed it. And 21% in the community reductions, which are, as everybody knows, very difficult to measure because they actually have to pull a billing permit in order to change out their water heaters. And that doesn't happen very frequently. Usually, people need their water heaters right away, and even, and they don't take that step. So I was pleased to see this. Others got three awards, and the other award that was given to them was coming directly from industry like PG&E or Edison Electric. And since we own our own utilities, I'm not sure we would even be able to be part of a measurement for that one. And then Santa Rafael is the one that has the all-time leader, and they were able to achieve all of their measurements and 100%. And so Santa Rafael did get that award and recognition at the League of Cities meetings at opening session. Then also, just to piggyback off of this, I very much enjoyed this conference. Once again, it's very, very rigorous on Thursdays. Next year, it's going to be in Los Angeles. But I did get to sit through the legal departments, Molly's Group, on the housing element. And so I was able to watch our attorney in action, who's writing on the SEQA case that we have right now. And just listening to the, her pearls of wisdom, what to do, what not to do. And we get to do it all over again in the next 13 months. So we are stepped up for our next housing element approval. I also want to echo what we learned just last week with Assemblyman Rich Gordon, that the trend of legislation is that since many organizations and groups are not able to get some of their interests in city policy, because it's too hard to go around, they go to Sacramento now, and they do blanket policy. And the League is very concerned about that. And I know the mayor's been very good about sending letters off, right now, on the veto desk for Jerry Brown. But then also, we were able to support the League in getting action in order to remove some of the points that they were unhappy with, which allows the cities to have the type of autonomy that we need to have in order to operate as a city. But they expect this trend to continue. And we've already heard this. And so I think that extra diligence on Palo Alto's part is really important and critical right now. And then just finally, I did get elected as Secretary of Treasurer to the Peninsula Board. So that does not mean that you guys don't get to go to the dinners. We've been challenged to bring as many people as we can to the dinners. They do have very interesting topics. I saw a number of you there last time, where they did the Delta Water Project, which I thought was a very good informational meeting.
What's the next date, Nancy?
Yeah. I'll get back to you on that.
Great.
But please stay tuned to that. And just what I do is I just shoot the email over to the city clerk and say, please sign me up. So if there's any fees due, they can go ahead and put it on. The city can take care of all of that, and you can just walk right in. Thank you.
Councilmember Niss.
Well, I will just add a bit to what the Vice Mayor has said. And I think in addition to what she is talking about, and the number of presentations that we went to were many, we tried not to run into each other so that we could bring back different types of information. But I attended the one that dealt with homeless encampments out of San Luis Obispo. So it was particularly interesting to hear directly from their attorney, who had dealt with that, and hear the direct answers. There was also a very good presentation on the Affordable Care Act. And in addition, one of the most interesting sessions, and one of the best-attended, actually was on parliamentary procedure. I was surprised. The room was jammed. And it was interesting. They did some role-playing of an actual council meeting. The city was not mentioned, and the language exchanged was rather dramatic.
It should have been ours.
No.
Are we going to lay this on the table, Liz?
It was really, it was stunning. I'm sorry the rest of you missed this exchange that happened, actually happened at some council meeting. Not all councilors are as polite as Palo Alto, needless to say. But I would also like to mention, because I know not everyone wants to go to these, and Larry, I think it's terrific that you are willing to go to Florida. But also, you have an opportunity to talk with your colleagues far more informally than we do here. And I really welcome that. And also, probably we shouldn't mention it, but they certainly have a lot of fun. So another delightful, you know, just, you know, we discovered it. So it, so in addition to a great deal being accomplished, we heard a great, many different presentations, as I mentioned. But also, it was a wonderful chance to interact informally with the 5,000 or 6,000 council members that there are in the state of California. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
I'll be brief with this, but also having to do with the League. As Councilmember Niss said, you do get a chance to chat with councilmembers from other communities. And every community has its own unique challenges. And since everything is relative, sometimes we feel like, well, I'll just speak personally, sometimes I feel like we're really challenged here. And then hearing the plight of some other councilmembers in other towns, it's like, oh, my. So it makes me appreciate our own Palo Alto community. And just very briefly, two of the tracts that I attended were on the SEQA updates. And SEQA reform is an ongoing and alive-and-well challenge to our environmental law. So stay tuned for more on that. And one of the other ones that I attended that was very interesting was a tract on economic development.
So I have a couple of things as well. First of all, I've been having discussions with the mayor of East Palo Alto about building bridges between our communities. And we've decided that we're going to schedule a joint session. We'll probably do it sometime in November. Details will follow. We're still, our city managers are talking about the details and about what we're going to do. So I wanted to make that announcement. And then I also wanted to announce something else. A couple of you have talked to me about Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. And one of the things, at least I can find in our protocols of where it has to go, I was thinking of trying Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements earlier so that the public actually can hear what we're saying. I noticed what a lot of councilmembers say is a lot of interest to the public. And we do it, well, tonight, we're doing it at a reasonable hour for a change. But normally, Councilmember Comments and Questions is at the end of a meeting, somewhere around 11 o'clock. And I think we do a disservice to the public that way. So I am going to move it and change it. But I wanted to raise it in case anyone thought there was an issue with doing it that way. I was a little concerned, frankly, about it, in that, that's why I say we're going to try it, that if it's early, that councilmembers will talk for a really long time. And I don't want this to become a half-hour, 45-minute issue. And so, you know, as long as I think we're respectful of that issue and respectful that we need to move our meetings forward, that I think it's much better to do it early. So those were my thoughts on that. And if you have any concerns about it, feel free to let me know. I was going to do it right after City Manager Comments. I thought the City Manager Comments and Councilmember Questions and Comments would be appropriate. Anyway, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.